Recording last time.
So ready.
It is recording now. She's ready. Can someone at home confirm that you can hear us?
I can hear you, Teresa.
Thank you. All right, it is 6:01 PM. Call in to order the April 2nd, 2024, meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee. We'll begin with public comment. We have no public in person. Is there anyone online who would like to make public comment? We have the chat open. Nope, no public comment. All right, hearing them, we will close public comment and move on to Chairperson's report. So I just have two things to cover this time. The Jake sent out the letter reminding us about the, or email reminding us about the letter to invite our town partners back into the collaboration process. I just didn't have time to read that. So I'll do that and address it moving forward. And I know we'll have other opportunities through subcommittees to engage with town partners as well, but I just ran out of time. But I can report back on engagement events, which we had talked about last time. And I CC'd the whole committee on a couple of the invitations today so that you could just see the general look of it. I CC'd Anna on all of them. So just so you all know, I've reached out to the PTO organizations at both elementary schools, the Council on Aging for both towns, library for both towns, Manchester Essex Rotary, Manchester Mothers Club, and the Essex Division of the Chamber of Commerce. And I've heard back from a couple of them, three of them already, and we're in process to schedule those. Again, these are, these are mostly listening sessions, taking in feedback, answering questions where we can, and sparking conversation about what, how do we define excellence when it comes to education, trying to reach a broader audience? The feedback I have gotten was, great idea to take it on the road, great idea to broaden the reach. So that's good. And I did set up and send out a link to an Excel sheet, just with two tabs. One has the list of dates for things that are important to us for the rest of the year, not just our school committee calendar, but things with graduation and stuff, so you can keep that updated as we go. And a second tab that, where we can capture the notes from these engagement sessions, like we discussed last time, Jake brought that idea up. So that will be just a standing link where we can access that info. And that's it for my Chairperson's report tonight, except, oh, sorry to interrupt. Except to welcome Michelle Cresta. Thank you for joining us. This is your first official meeting with us. Welcome to the team. How's it going?
Thank you. It's going great.
Great. Good answer.
Very good. Love it. Absolutely love it.
Well, we're glad to have you here, and I'm sure that extends into Central Office.
Very much.
And then the final thing, Erica has agreed to read our final MASC Code of Ethics section.
Can I ask a clarifying question about, you were mentioning the community outreach about how we define excellence. And I know, I think Diego or maybe Sarah, at the last meeting, you mentioned that it would also be a worthwhile goal to reach out to students. Is that something we can do? I would love to help with that effort. And is that something we should be starting to do now, create a survey or some way to collect that information?
So I think the, my, I should have commented on this. Last Student Advisory Council meeting was the day after that meeting, and it was a full meeting. My hope had been to bring that up at the next one and let the students lead out on some of that, because they might have better ideas than we even did on how to handle that. But yes, we do need to capture that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it would be great to get that done this year if we can.
I agree. Go for it. If I can happen, please ask a question, make a suggestion.
Yep. I know there's interest in getting it done sooner rather than later, but it might be a good topic for your summer workshop, to have a real plan of attack of how you want to do this. I'm sure there's faculty.
Yep.
And the admin team that should be factored into this conversation, maybe could offer some support and have a structure the process and how to have it support. We've already done it.
Yeah. And I think that's the idea is, I mean, we have, we have a strategic plan, we have a vision of the graduate, but this, this question of, it keeps coming up, especially in the context of last year's budget discussions, and none of us knows what that means or have tied it specifically to this. So we're still in the information gathering stage on this exercise. So yes, that, that does make a lot of sense.
Okay. Better. A school committee in their relation with their fellow committee members should, one, recognize that action at official meeting is binding, and that they alone cannot bind the committee outside of such meetings. Two, realize that they cannot make statements or promises of how they will vote on matters that will come before the committee. Three, uphold the intent of executive sessions and respect the privileged communications that exist in executive sessions. Four, not withhold pertinent information on school matters or personnel problems, either from members of their own committee or from members of other committees who may be seeking help or information on school problems. Five, make decisions only after all facts on a question have been presented and discussed.
Thank you to MASC for this four-part Code of Ethics reminder. That concludes my Chairperson's report for tonight. We have Stella here for the student report.
Hi, so Diego asked me to fill in for tonight because I'm going to be here. There's only a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. And well, I suppose I wasn't actually at the last student advisory board meeting because I was out sick. But I talked to Diego and some other members of the board about some of the things that they talked about. So I think one of the main topics that was on the table at the last student advisory board meeting was the structure of the student board. So I think a lot of those things are kind of like still being sorted out. I've been on the board for three years now, and the structure has been at times a bit flexible. But I'm really glad that that's something that's on the table and being talked about. I know that they talked about the number of students on the board. Right now, I believe we have two students from each grade except for seniors, which we only have Diego as a senior. And we talked a little bit about how that's a good number of students to have and have two from each grade is a good system. And then it was also discussed kind of Diego's position and how that's chosen, because I'm kind of filling in for Diego when he asks me to, but it really is a position that should be officially, there should be a system and an official way to choose it. So I'm glad that that's on the table and that we're kind of in the process of figuring that out. But yeah, I think also one thing that was brought up was the importance of all positions being kind of elected by, like students are elected by their peers, which is the case right now and is also the case with our student government. I think personally, I think all the students think it's really important that these roles are chosen by peers, and that that's what gives students the most voice in matters. Yeah, and then I just, I guess I also personally wanted to bring up some of the, I guess, like topics that students are talking about a lot right now or that kind of are really big in the school right now. So first is definitely SCORE, which is the seniors project that they do at the end of the year. So our quarter ends on Friday, which means that the seniors are going to be taking flights and leaving and doing big things out in the world. So that's definitely big news. And I personally know, I love always hearing about all like the different plans that kids have for SCORE, because it really ranges like so much. Like some kids are like, I'm making a cookbook. And some other kids are like, I'm doing an internship, and some kids are working. So it's really cool to see all the different things that people are doing. And I guess one change from last year is I know that requirements for what you can and cannot count as a SCORE project have gotten a lot more strict. So the plans that I see that kids have are like a lot more concrete, which I think is personally a good thing. Yeah, I just wanted to touch on the wide variety, the wide variety of projects that people are doing. And I don't know, I guess just kind of how important I think that project is for parents for whatever they choose to do in the future. So yeah, and then I guess another event that was really big was STEAM Night, which is STEM with the A. And I know that sounds like kind of silly thing, but it really was like a huge event. And like, I don't know if any of you guys were here, but like the entire cafeteria was packed, the entire gym was packed, and we had like stands from different classes and like businesses and other groups. And I think also there's like maybe the jazz bit. There were some sort of musical bands there as well. So yeah, some of us were at the school for like 12 or 13 hours. I thought it was just like really cool to see, I guess, like that dedication to kind of like clubs and outside, like activities and classes that kids had to like be willing to spend 12 hours at the school. Like I had like people from like AP Environmental Science, like coming up and like pitching their aquascape project to me. And like, people were just really enthusiastic. So I thought that was cool to kind of see like the student body's enthusiasm about that. And then the last thing that I guess I wanted to bring up was like kind of post-graduation plans and like college acceptances. A lot of seniors are kind of making their, their post-graduation plans. I know a couple of people are going abroad, which is really cool to see, but I think there's just like a lot of change in the air right now. Seniors kind of moving on, leaving the school, AP tests right around the corner. The quarter, I mean, so yeah, I think there's a lot of energy in the air, but I would say it's mostly, mostly positive these days.
Yeah. Anyone have questions, Krista?
I have one.
Yeah. What's the, what's the buzz? What is the student response to, aside from yours? What are you hearing? The student response to the change for the requirements for SCORE projects?
Um, I think people are, I've heard a bit of frustration about it, I suppose. Because I think it's kind of sometimes can be stressful to have to figure out your plans in a very concrete manner and figure out, is this going to give me credit? But overall, I do think it has been more like a motivating factor for people to do legitimate projects. And also the thing with SCORE is that if you're taking a high, like if you're taking a lot of AP classes, then the number of hours you have to do for SCORE is less. So I think those, those requirements have kind of made it easier for kids who have a really heavy force load to not be overwhelmed with SCORE. Yeah. And there, do you know if there were any changes this year to allow the kids with a lot of APs to do something meaningful? Because I know in the past, that's sometimes been a challenge, right? If you have four AP classes, what are you going to do for SCORE this year? Have you heard anything about that? I've heard some kids who are in, like a lot of AP classes, like five or six, they're having, I guess, some troubles. Yeah, finding something that's impactful to do, but also fits within their time requirements. Because with like, you can't factor in travel time to counter your SCORE time. So I know a lot of kids are like TA-ing in different classes at the school for their SCORE project, because they don't necessarily have the time in their school day to like go to an outside location for like 30 minutes a day and then come back throwing their free blocks. So I know that has been a struggle, I suppose, but I think it, it's hard to kind of factor that in to, like TA sounds like a great, TA sounds like a good kind of happy medium with that. But yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. My adult heart loves the more structured sort of thing. So I'm hopeful when it comes out the other side, positive. Anyone else have questions? Well, you are welcome to stay or go as you see fit. All right, that concludes the student report then, on to consent agenda. And before I entertain a motion, I just want to point out, so consent agenda has the warrants, the minutes, and the out-of-state travel. We do not have a recording, we had a little tech glitch from last time. We don't have a recording from the last meeting, which means if you haven't had a chance to look at the minutes, it's almost a little more important to make sure you look in great detail. I myself have not looked in great detail enough at the minutes to vote on that. So if anyone else feels strongly about that, we can separate it out, or if you all, if you all feel like you've looked at it well enough, we can keep it together. Thoughts?
Thank you.
Everyone's fine with it? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with acceptance of warrants, AP vouchers, 1057 through 1059, and the minutes from the March 20th meeting, March 19th meeting, and out-of-state travel for DECA. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
Just a clarifying question. The DECA cost, the letter that was there, I'm just clarifying that the cost is 1,300 per student. Didn't actually say, I'm making an assumption. And is that taught or by the student and family or by the school?
Typically, yes, but it's a per student, and it's a combination of fundraising by DECA, but also some student activity resources that the basic will pass. They have a special line item that's funded to about $10,000 each year to support things like DECA debate.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? No? All in favor? No opposed, I'm abstaining because of the minutes. All right, most of you passes. Thank you. Moving on to subcommittee reports. For facilities, that will be tonight's report. We met to have meet and greets with people who were interested in serving on the school building committee. We still have things to do. A little bit behind because of the acceptance they posted was later than we expected, and so we needed to get that a little bit longer. And so we will have that coming up for our next meeting on the 24th. We have a recommendation on that. But that's, we didn't have a full meeting other than that. We just had our, our meet and greets since our, since our last meeting. Anything else?
The only other, go through it. We're going to have a whole thing motion later, so we can probably talk. Yeah, and I have a general update. We can probably tie it all together later. Finance Subcommittee, we have no report. Negotiations?
No report.
Just waiting on, going to share more paperwork and everybody agreeing that it's time to move to the next step.
Great. Policy program, have a report, who would like to operate?
I can re-permit us unless one of you guys wants to. We met today, we met with respect to two specific items. The first was participation in extracurriculars by student residents who don't attend the district. We were able to meet with A.D. Molinari and Principal Mayno regarding the pros and cons of a policy allowing residents to participate, even though they attend private school. We started from the premise that we'd all like to get to yes, but we need to consider the pros and cons related to the policy. And it would appear, based on the feedback we've received from the administration, there is, there's a long list of challenges. I think, I guess, starting from a pro, we all recognize that there is a pro of expanding, you know, widening the net, being inclusive, diversity of perspectives, the things that come with opening doors. The challenges, some of them start from, and many are theoretical, but concerns that we'd have to consider if we were to draft a policy, such as the fact that non-district students don't have a code of conduct that they'd be responsible to, or that they're not signing a contract with the school, that they're responsible for a code of conduct. The impact on budget, potential displacement of district students, the potential of increased liability, being a few that were brought up by our administration. Many of those were theoretical, but the one that struck me as, as the most immediate challenge is some of the fact that our middle school sports, which while we discuss this with respect to extracurriculars more broadly, the request that we were presented with was specified to a middle school sport. At the moment, our middle school teams are very full. In particular, Field Hockey had 46 students this past season, even on two teams, that was more than 22 a team, 23 a team, exactly, which is more than two full lines. So adding students in that environment where sports are already oversubscribed is something that would be a real challenge. So for those reasons, I think it was hard for the administration to think about supporting a policy.
Any questions? Or should I move on to the reserves? Do you guys have, have you voted on a recommendation yet, or are you still working through it?
We are, we are basically in agreement. We are to recommend that not take a standard policy, develop a policy on this at this point. But we are not bringing that for form of vote. It's not a policy to be done if we need to take that stand. You know, recognizing that ultimately the school committee's decision, but we didn't come ready to have that discussion right now.
Okay.
I have a question. Would this apply only to sports that are not available at that, you know, private school?
Yes.
And any, and only sports that are not regulated by MIAA, which means just a few middle school sports?
Just to add on one thing, one of the challenges is also, if we were to open the door on the athletics, potentially we might also be able to get, you know, other I think of those after-school activities, for example, dance or theater or whatever it might be. So that's why at this point, there are quite a lot more challenges compared to the other.
So procedure-wise, we just haven't done this that much. So we have a recommendation from our Subcommittee to take no action on this request. But we need to vote on that effectively. So you're saying maybe hold off on another meeting and discuss it more fully?
Well.
It should be an agenda.
Yeah, I think it should be an agenda item. Because we also are probably, well, here from America, but we're probably ready to have a discussion pretty soon about the reserves.
Okay. All right, so I've got it.
Since we've given all of you something to think about, what can expect to this particular policy proposal, I will just add that my thought going into it is we are at a point where we are going to be looking to the community to support a building project of some sort. And to the extent that we are able to extend and gender goodwill from families who may not be, who may be paying taxes in this community, but not receive, not feeling like they're receiving immediate benefits from the school, I would have loved to say yes to this. I really, I really would. It was really difficult after the meeting with our administrators to think of how to do it, but I do want you all to think about that, because I think if we can, if anybody has a great solution to how we could say yes to it, I think it's a good time to think about saying yes.
All right, so that's food for thought.
Yeah.
Maybe that's going to be an agenda item coming up.
All right. With respect to the reserve policy, we are extremely grateful and fortunate to have had Michelle with us today. It made the meeting much more effective. We, one of the first questions, and one of the questions that has been slowing us down, has been simply defining what accounts are actually reserve accounts as opposed to revolving funds. And it was really helpful to hear Michelle's perspective that generally speaking, in the district she's familiar with, your reserve accounts are usually limited to E and D and the stabilization fund. So that's helpful to us. It's different from how we have done this in the past, and we're very cognizant of that, because we don't want anybody in the community to feel like we're suddenly changing things. But we're also at a really good point to have a reset, because money has flown out of our school choice reserve account, which was a revolving fund, and not a reserve account, but it's flown out. The mechanism for bringing it back in, if these warrant articles pass, will be to come into the stabilization fund, which means the two counts with, two accounts with any real significant balance will now be the account, the E and D account and the stabilization fund, which are the two accounts that are most typically referred to as reserve accounts. And that's where we will be at, is having two, you know, a more traditional structure. We discussed having both a floor and a ceiling potentially to our reserve accounts, such that we would try to make sure we have a healthy level of reserves and try to respond to the requests that the auditors have made, to make sure that we have a healthy level of reserve policy on our books, but also respond to the community feeling that perhaps we don't need quite as much. And that there can be some double counting, given that the two towns also have their own reserve accounts. We're waiting for a couple of points of clarification from Michelle and Pam, but we are anticipating being able to have a draft policy for you guys, if all goes according to plan, by the next meeting.
Okay, so question then. So having a draft policy, you made a recommendation.
More and more something to discuss, because there, as Sarah just mentioned, there are a couple of kind of key decisions that we are taking a stand on, and we need to run those by everybody.
I think it's more to discuss.
It's more of a discussion. During the policy itself.
Okay, I, I'm thinking though that it would be helpful, since we have been actually looking at a draft policy to meet our discussions, that it would be helpful for you guys to see it laid out, because that will allow you to identify, yes, I agree with this point, we have to talk about this threshold, whatever it might be, as opposed to just having a theoretical conversation.
Okay. Absolutely.
So from there, my next follow-up question is, have you compared what our towns are carrying versus what all of this?
We are not at the point of saying what the kind of value is yet. So I'm not sure that we're ready to answer that here.
Okay.
But that should be part of the discussion.
Okay, so we'll, we'll set time decides for that discussion, which may or may not require a vote at that point. But we at least need a substantive discussion to go toward the next step of creating a draft policy. Got it. Thank you. Anything else?
One other point that we should be thinking about with respect to reserves. Given where we are with reserves, we need to keep in mind that moving forward, in order to be able to continue to fund our capital plan, we need to be thinking about possibly having a line item in our operating budget for, to fund our stabilization account. Because after we pay for the feasibility study and something else that we have to pay for already.
The full moving of capital investments for this year.
Our capital investments for this year, our reserves will have shrunk considerably. I think our stabilization fund will be down to around $500,000. So it's just something for everybody to have in mind moving forward.
Yeah, and I took a peek at the capital plan after we've done. And over the next four years, we had like 1.8 million companies. So it just, yeah, this doesn't mean it all has to get done in that timeframe, but that's the objective timeframe for some of the work.
I guess what, what I've been envisioning, and I, who may all be picturing this differently, is that you guys come with a recommendation to pursue a policy in some way. And then at the finance Subcommittee level, we look at the implications of that so that we can make a recommendation as well about whether, how that's going to carry out, if we can carry forward. But it sounds like maybe you've combined those and are putting both into one?
Yeah, I think our, my thought was that we were tasked with proposing a policy, which is the road we've, the three of us, five of us have been on.
All right, well, we'll put it on as a discussion item and go from there. Thank you.
And that if we are going to put it on the discussion item, maybe Pam, at the same time, we can, or you and Michelle can update the capital plan, because I think the two are too tied together when it comes to this stabilization plan. And that way we can kind of show and help kind of decision, let people understand how, what it means, what it's possible.
Our next meeting is pre-town meeting. Probably have an hour at best. We're going to talk about, like, that's one of our discussions, what time do we want to start?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's easy to do both of these things in that meeting, so that would put us at the May 6th meeting, which is pre-Essays.
Right.
Also an hour. I mean, we could start earlier. We could make it a two-hour meeting and do, and do these two topics that night. We don't have to decide this right this second. We can talk about it when we talk about end of the year calendar. That puts us to May 21st.
I wonder if we could also circulate, you know, assuming we are able to come up with a draft, which we do already have a working version of the draft, we could circulate it to the full committee. I know we can't have deliberation, but it would give, maybe make a meeting more efficient by allowing people to think about their comments.
So.
I think what would be helpful is to draft, send out a draft, and then we can highlight some of the things that we want people to think about.
I would prefer if we just send, if you're going to have a draft to send out, that we just send it out and we're not highlighting the different things. Just let us look at it, because I, I just don't want to get into us, what we're advocating and not advocating. I just want to have that discussion here. But, but if we can send it out and be thinking about it in preparation, I think it's fine to do it the May 21st meeting. That's, both of those are a lot to take on right before, as we're walking into a town meeting. I feel like either those is a lot to take on.
Yeah, and you're not going to be able to engage the audience that may already participate, right? Is there setting up? Yeah. So we could do this potentially, is we could circulate the draft once it's complete. You could, we could do the feedback to me, and I can compile the feedback, and then circulate the feedback with the policy prior to the 21st. So you have a sense of where people are coming in, but you don't have deliberation.
Right.
If that works.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your report and for your work. Superintendent's report. Superintendent's report.
This could be speedy because. We don't have the same things. So just some follow ups. So most of these aren't new. A couple of them are, we're midway through the date of student search at the middle school. So Joanne has that in hand. They're beginning interviews and during this week. There'll be the follow up sessions and elongated. Site visits after vacation. We all wanted to welcome Michelle, not like we have to wait for this for a very long time. We're very happy that Michelle's here. We've had a wonderful first week and. She keeps coming back, so we haven't completely completed yet. Super excited. I think I would echo Stella's thought. There's a lot going on. It's a lot of positive energy starting to set up for next year and getting into our celebration phase. For this year, but we've got hiring underway. The first major set of postings went up last Friday. Those are for all of our known vacancies, primarily retirements and any known resignation for people who are moving or having changes of their life plans. And we plan another set to go out this Friday. And that should encompass some of the newer positions that we are, that we had approved through the budget. So stay tuned for that. Allison shared with me some good news. CPAC has been reformed. And I have the twenty first on my mind because that's becoming the date where everybody wants to just get something in by the end of the year. So we believe CPAC will be ready to visit us, nothing huge, but to kind of reintroduce themselves and. When they come, they're going to be bringing the much discussed but never materialized special ed report. That we have been, had been working on for some time. So that will likely be the twenty first. Another kind of fun thing that came up out of the blue. This is tied to score because this came out of a score project from last year. Was it yours? Do you know who it was? Well, there was a recommendation that the Manchester Police Department get a comfort dog. So they are pursuing a comfort dog. So there may be some work for us in the future to amend some of our policies to allow for the comfort dog. To come to school on a regular basis with the S R O. So. We have a lot of steps to go through. And the first step is for the police department to get. Get the support of their board. So I think. Right around this time, they're going to be working with Boris Slechman in Manchester. But basically the whole project would run through and be managed by the police department and the dog would just be here as a visitor to the building. So we wouldn't have responsible for the. Training or upkeep of the dog, but we would have the benefit of having the dog. So we don't have to get into the policy meetings tonight.
Right.
Just putting it on your radar, potentially on the twenty first. And if not, maybe the, the sixth of June. We were going to have the group come and kind of give a presentation for this group and set that piece in motion to get us thinking about it.
I could be wrong, but is there a chance that that wasn't score? Was that a ninth grade civics project?
That may have been a ninth grade. No, my job is score on the third grade civics project.
Yeah, so kudos to our ninth graders. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just would a comfort dog could be living in all the district school with the sex opportunity?
Yeah. We tried a few years ago and it just didn't get off the ground, but I think this structure is going to work with our. Policy concerns and there'll be a whole piece about how we manage allergies and all of that. So. More to come. Just want to put the bug in your ear. We were really excited about it. I love that dog people on staff. So we're thrilled. And then senior week, been very quiet. But I think it's going to be a nice. Julie's been very positive about everything that's going on and the high energy and the excitement. And rolling into score and what is going to be in the blink of an eye, another year behind us. So we're excited. I think again, we're all in the same wavelength because I've started and we'll have Amy finish up for us when she. Returns kind of the end of the year activities list, which there are more activities than we have days there in the year. I also wanted to just give a public thank you to Christie Amili and everybody who participated in the STEM showcase. This was Christie's. Baby really, she launched it last year. She enlisted even more people this year, students, other admins, parents, the whole works. It really built this out. I can only imagine what it's going to look like next year. It was just a really fun upbeat festive night. So I think we all had the same reaction to it. And we've got more coming. On Thursday night, we have the spring concert. Next Thursday night, there's a poetry cafe in Essex Elementary. Samantha Silly is overseeing it. It's poetry month. And then also coming up, Mike Leitman is going to do an S E L evening. That's being sponsored by the Middle School School Council. And then we have an information session for parents of specialized students entering sixth grade in the fall. That's tomorrow night and the understanding, the new I E P. It will pertain to some, not others, but that's, there's two sessions coming up on that and they're all virtual. So that's just part of. Combination of some of our student performances and our parent education series options that are coming up over the next few weeks. And I will need many slides and probably many sheets of paper for everything that's coming post-vacation. So stay tuned for that. And then we can just get into this piece after. We want to, we have some other pieces in the meantime, so I can pause on this and we can talk a little bit about project when we get to the vote.
Yes, and we have, I think we have that continued business too. We have hope.
So pretty like, did I put that first? Did I put that's your first?
Okay, do we want to just roll into it then? Do we have any questions from the general update first, if that's okay? I have one. For the. The evening tomorrow night for incoming sixth graders of. Special education kids. Is that I E Ps only or five oh fours as well?
Technically it would be I E Ps.
Okay.
But if there's. I'm happy to follow up. I'm just serious. Five oh four would. Families would benefit from it.
That's a question.
Yep.
Anyone else have questions?
I have logistic questions about the dog project.
About what?
The dog, the dog project.
We'll have a whole time to ask. So you, you know, our principals, they are logistics people and they are going to tell people. So we're kind of staying on the convenient concept degree with it. I just wanted to know if there was anybody who was going to have a real life. Oh my God, don't go there. I didn't think we would. And I think we want to let. Police Department kind of pursue. And if, if they get all of the clearances they need, then we can go to work on all of our. To do this.
And one thing I have is just. You know how in cafeteria, especially on which is scored, there's like no penis because of the diarrhea. But with a dog, a lot of people are allergic to dogs. So how, how do we go about?
So we, a couple of things. We can declare certain areas of the building off limits. We can also do consent forms. And then have our admin team map the rooms that the dogs can't go in because students are in certain places in certain that. So. What we know from other schools who have done it, and I think that we've been talking a lot. The team has been talking a lot with Gloucester who has done this is that. The hardest. No pun intended, but the hardest nut to crack in terms of policy and protocol is at the elementary level where students can advocate for themselves less. And then as they get older, it becomes a little bit easier because by the time you're in high school, you certainly know whether or not you're going to have a reaction. There's also a lot of, a lot we can learn about the fact that the dog will be here, not for extended, won't be in any one confined space for a long period of time, which might agitate an allergy, but can keep them in larger open spaces. So. Lot, a lot of those questions are on our mind because that's where we might have to tailor our policy a little bit. Because we do have a no, no animals on campus halls. So we have to make that.
Is it no animals entitled? Should address that.
Yeah. I saw a squirrel while I was walking. I don't think it appeared a dragon.
We got that.
I know no one likes my history stories, but we did want to have a bunny that hopped freely about the building. One of my very first days, I kind of sat down in the back of a class and I just saw this bunny hopping around and going into backpacks and it's very cute.
Very cute. Lovely. Well, thank you. For your general update.
Do we want to? Head into.
Yeah, let's, let's tell the huge business.
Essex Elementary School feasibility study. Okay, so just the quick status report. Couple of things to add to the facilities report. I did include the S B C charge. Thank you guys for looking at it. This Manchester thing keeps popping up because we are using some updated language and. I've updated that since the intent was to give you a sense of what the school. What the school committee outlined is the work of the S B C last go around. I don't think it's changed all that much. M S B A hasn't changed its policies. So. I find that helpful when people ask, what does the group do? What they're responsible for. So. Open to feedback on that, but that can. We could use that when we set the committee slate next meeting. We, I did have some success in getting a building project page up and running. It's very simple. Well, essentially. It has an introduction to the project, set of F A Qs, which walk people through. Everything from what is the M S B A to what the feasibility study is and how, how does it get funded? In the top right hand corner, there's a rolling slideshow that pulls pictures from the Habib report, pictures that Jason has, has taken over the years of the boiler room. You know, stained ceiling, it was falling tiles, just to give people a sense of what the current conditions are of the building. And then underneath it, there's a long list of historical documents or documents that are both historical and in current that lead you. All the way back to when we formed the first facilities task force, did some surveying, created a white paper. Those are the documents that led to the determination of the fact that we have, our, we went for two separate buildings, one in each town. It has the first V report, the current V report and the S O I. We'll keep building that as we go, just so people have a record of. All of the documents that go into the decision making. Or that are shared publicly that account for the state of the bill. So that's just there as a resource and a tool. Not the end all be all. There are plenty of things we could add. So if there are suggestions or questions that come up that you think we should add to the list, just let us know and we can, we can work on building that up. So from there, we go to what you had, what we thought the work would be tonight, which is seating the committee. Which was on pause, but now we're going to talk about the feasibility study vote. So the order of operations there is just simply. The, the school committee. The school district is the project owner. And similar to the turf field, you will vote first to appropriate money and to approve going forward with the feasibility study. And then we count on the two towns to. Create their own votes at their town meetings, determine the mechanism by which they'll fund their piece. So even though. They might be voting and appropriating separately, they're appropriating to us as. District members to support the project that the school committee is putting forward. The N S B A. So we vote to put forward the full amount. And then a portion. And, and then divide it by three and a portion of the remainder. Divide by three, take off our piece, which would be five hundred thousand and a portion of the remainder. And I've been working with Greg and Brendan on that over the past. So the language in the document, the language that we're using tonight is the school committee. Which has been approved by the M S B A. I think that's the other piece worth mentioning in this, which is what I included. In the packet was draft language for the town of Manchester and the town of Essex. It was pulled from the 2016 exercise, but it's been given back to the two towns. They need to review. Change and have it approved by council and then it goes before M S B A for approval. So as of today, Essex. Language is, has been through council and we're still waiting. I'm still waiting to hear back from Manchester, but the M R S D has been, okay.
So help, so I'm.
So I think what you could do is. Move as, as printed and I can handwrite one.
Or you could read it. Well, no, you can read it out. That's fine. But I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So we're going to take our school committee vote tonight. And then we have language for the articles to be presented at the town. Meetings for each town and you're suggesting that the school committee does not present those.
I'm not suggesting that.
Okay.
At all. What I'm suggesting is right now, we're just working through the language as it should appear.
Okay.
In the book, in the warrant.
Yeah.
In the language that should be used for the motion.
Got it.
We need to submit that and M S B A has to prove what the towns are intending to do, but the towns are the drafters.
Right.
Of their warrant in motion language. Who ends up doing it? Like it says, town board member one, border committee. That's up for everyone to decide who should present.
Gotcha.
Last time around, I do believe that all school committee members presented it at both.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's. Place folders because ultimately they're going to want to see the name in the board that runs.
Got it. But tonight we need to take this vote on.
April second.
The yes, that's the vote that we need to make.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So to do this by way of voting, does anyone have clarifying questions first? No clarifying questions. Okay, then I'm just going to, I'm going to. I move that the Manchester Essex Regional School District, M R S D hereby appropriates the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying costs of the Essex Elementary School feasibility study. For the school located 12 story street, Essex, Massachusetts, oh one nine two nine. Described in two separate deeds recorded in A Book forty two oh three on page three ninety nine and B in Book forty two sixteen on page five oh one and shown together on a plot plan in Plan Book eighty six. Plan eighty eight in the Essex South Registry of Deeds and depicted on map one twenty nine lot five of the town of Essex assessors maps. Including all costs incidental and related thereto the study. Set amount to be expended under the direction of M R S D Essex Elementary School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, five hundred thousand is hereby transferred from available funds of the district. And one million shall be assessed upon the towns of Manchester by the C and Essex. And a portion between the two member towns in accordance with the formula for capital cost apportionment. Contained in the M R S D regional agreement as amended. The district acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authorities, M S B As. Grant program is a non entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the M S B A. And any costs the district incurred in excess of any grant approved by and received from the M S B A shall be the sole responsibility of the district. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Clarification. The language that says to meet this appropriation, five hundred thousand is hereby transferred from available funds. Is that it? Are we taking up budget action and do we need to specify where it is being transferred from? Or is it just committing to it?
Committing to.
Okay.
So we don't have to say these on stabilization.
Another question. We're very specific about the site. Does the feasibility study also include other sites or does it only include that site?
We know. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
What it's naming is the site that's under review.
Right.
Not the sites to be.
Okay.
We have to look at other sites.
Thank you. Yeah. The other discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor. Vote as you can this.
One step.
One step closer. Thank you for all your work on that. Okay. All right. For a fill them up date.
We're filled up today.
Heather Leonard, you'd like to join us.
We're still.
Yes, please.
Happy April. I, I love getting to see this, the scoreboard out there again, which. Like Manchester's eleven points zero with thirty seconds left. So here we go. Word it. I just have a few quick brief updates to share with you. The M cast season has started and moving right along. I had really smooth. A smooth rollout of the high school. They did a really nice job. Those two days felt really good. One of the days we had one absent, so I was able to get that done, move on and back to regular operations, which is pretty great. So that's within the E L A. That started at the high school, elementary, middle school. Elementary, middle schools start this week and next week. Math will be early in mid May. Science ends up being up late May and we have a new player to the game, which is an eighth grade civics, which will be taking place in June. So up and running, nice and smooth. The team here, I was really impressed. I was sort of prepared to get all the gear on and get it ready to go. And oh no, we got this. And it's just their ready role, so great tech support, great organization. And then just back to the, back to the real work at hand. So it's nice and smooth. Another update I want to share is just a, a quick status update on our curriculum review processes. We have a few that are currently in that initial stage. We have the history and social science curriculum review process, which we've been meeting throughout the course of the year. And that works also been enhanced with both the receiving of the genocide education grant, which I mentioned the last time, that's supporting some more both curriculum development and seeking community partnerships. And also the grant that we received to field test the investigating history. An exciting brief highlight on that is we actually have the opportunity, because of the grant funding that we have, we had access up over. So we reached out to one of the approved partners and brought them in. And we built a custom day around what our teachers were asking for, which is like, how are you doing inquiry education with a limited time and a really dense curriculum? So we built this beautiful customized PD. And one of the pieces our teacher are often saying is like, I want to talk with other people doing it. So we had the person come in for us, but we extended to neighboring districts. So we had teachers join us from Hamilton, Wenham, Salem, Reading, Wakefield, forgetting. And somewhere else, we actually had 20 teachers that were all together, our teachers with, with colleagues. So they got to work across different districts to collaborate and share ideas. It was just, it was a great day of learning, really digging into increased education. So it's history, social science. World language update, our world language department has been doing a great job. They've been leaning into the online learning training modules that Desi has created to really walk them through. There was a significant shift in the world language standards in 2021. So these modules really examine deeply what those shifts are. So we're beautifully poised and just met myself and the department head to plan what does next year look like and sound like for us? Now that we understand what that shift looks like, what are our action steps? So that will be a, a curriculum review that continues next year. But the department's really grounded in deepening their understanding. So that's exciting. Our arts council had a chance to meet, not this past week, but the week before, and really starting to get to know deeply, deeply understand what are the measures that we use to, to consider? What does the programming look like in our arts offerings? And then what are those indicators that will help us to see where we are? So that work is underway. And the ELA, the, the stage, the ELA K through five is in, is in the implementation stage. And I just wanted a, a little update is we actually had the curriculum leadership elementary team meet today. And we spent the day doing like aggregate data analysis. So they've been curriculum mapping their curriculum that they've had. So we as a team stepped back to look at where were their inconsistencies and gap? And are there trends across different grade levels that we're going to lean in and target? So we had a chance to, as a group, sort of step back from our teaching day to day and look across the grades at all the curriculum maps that are taking place. Where are their consistencies and where are their gaps? And then what is that going to mean for us? So that's moving along, I think. That's it. And then.
Are we rolling into our team SOI?
I'm ready if you are. Yeah.
Can we ask questions on your update first? Does anyone have a question? I have, so.
Go ahead.
My question is you, your updates are so good. And it, this is the most aware I've ever been of the grants and the grant process of, of, you know, how they're being used and that sort of thing. If someone wanted to know about all of this, do you have somewhere on the website where these are listed out? Not necessarily your updates, but, but just what grants we're working with right now?
I don't have that in a consistent spot, but I'm absolutely, I started to sort of share a little blog on Wednesday. I'm happy to have a brand information location. If you can go be helpful.
If, if, if there ends up being spare time. I just think especially our community partners are always interested in that.
There's some good stuff happening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could cross like the finance.
Yeah.
So there's two places.
So mine to follow up to several things that I think about. How is authentic learning being talked about in all this? Or how, how is, you know, all this work kind of coming to a definition of that? I still, I, I'd still love to see something about, you know, what you're working with or what that looks like.
That's a great question, actually. The, the definition of authentic learning was just, we just started revisiting the work that had, had taken place. So it's, it's sort of coming back around again within the AC to look at what the different levels had said, what that common definition was, the thing there too. And then does that need any just check ins and updates? I think the, the big piece that we're finding is, you know, that, that definitely, so a lot of it's embedded, but we might not be explicitly naming it or calling it as it is. So that's sort of that next, honestly, that's a big launch for me for next year. It hasn't necessarily taken the front and center of the strategic priorities. It's been a little bit of, for me, calibrating around them. But I, one of the things that came up that was great is during the, that investigating history, that field test PD that we did, one of some of your teachers was like, this is the best part because look, there's a social emotional, there's a cultural competency. Look at this authentic learning with this increase students, it's all here. So I mean, really that's the goal is that the work that we're doing brings all of the pieces in in a connected way. So that's something that, a big piece that I've been in the professional development plan drafting for next year is, is that sort of like that, that's that focus area for me, for us is to, how is that? How are we centering that conversation more so? And so that word we started with bringing it back to AC just recently and making sure we're getting that, that backup.
And then can you just clarify? World language just started moving into next year. History, social science anticipated to end this year or be done by this year?
Oh, world language has actually been working on the entire year. There's 14 online modules. Each one takes about an hour and it actually goes through intensive training. So they've been doing it over the entire course of the year. We decided that to give that curriculum review a two year process because of that level of intensity of that background training. And we wanted the whole team to have that depth of knowledge before we then started to think about what does that next step look like? Is it a, you know, is it a curriculum adoption process? Is it a pathways reeval? Is it assessments? So that one is, has been going on and it's primed us for, so it's second step. The history, social science, our goal is that we're going to have clarity about recommendations for action steps by the spring. So some of these pieces, like the investigating history of our field testing. So a bit of that is gathering that data and feedback about is this something we would recommend continuing? Is it another year field testing? Is it adoption? They're also expanding that pilot to page three of course. So part of that feedback is, do we put our aim forward to continue to consider pilot and that'll come from the team? And then the other pieces is what does it look like for those other, the other grade levels that are within there and those action steps? So the, the goal is that by June, we will have a recommendation for each one of those sort of bands and what their next action step is next year, which will move us into sort of applying those steps from, from the review.
And, and the arts and, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the arts is not just a curriculum review. It's like kind of a program look.
Yeah.
Kind of where, where are you in?
Our goal, again, our goal is that by June, we will have, have consensus around ratings on where our current program is that will help us to then form action, recommended action steps. So what, a bit of what we're in the place of is we've dug into the different indicators to see what the measures are to measure the program. Because it is, as you said, really comprehensive. Now our next step is we are taking what artifacts we said we would like to see. And now it's a matter of like collecting, do we even have that information? Do we need to gather that information? Once we gather those artifacts, it'll then be the members of that advisory actually breaking, breaking and rating using the artifacts that we have on the record. So those then give us, you know, different priority areas or potential priority areas that we can report with making recommendations. So ideally that we've gone through the process of at least having all council members having had a chance to, you know, evaluate the artifacts and then make their, make their ratings on the rubric. I would love to say we'd get to the action plan by June, but I, I do, I do, my goal is that we'll all have completed the rating and rubric sale by June. And it might be that the action planning work might go into the fall, just to make sure that there's an appropriate amount of time. So that piece I'm judging, but spring optimistic, it will be a feedback report for you all to hear where we were.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just to revisit the world language trajectory, that's going to tie to our staffing request. So I think the goal, when you hear us saying it's not the priority in the moment, is to have our complete work done on world language and to have a K-12 concept and curriculum. So when we're hiring, we know what we're hiring and how it will fit together, how cases. But that's always in the back of our minds, we're trying to. But when we're asking for resources, we have a, we have a plan, an effective plan.
I think that explanation is now about the, the standards training, taking a year and then into a, being a two year process that then leads into an informed decision about making a plan for K-12 here. That's something that will help, help us as we get the questions from, from the community. That's huge. So thank you. Yes, it will help us. So can you remind me, when is, when is that? When do you expect that recommendation and the process to be done? I know you just said it, can you say next June?
I didn't say it about world language. By the end of this year, we will have my, the, the team. And again, kudos, they've been doing a lot of work. We'll have completed the 14 online training modules, which will then set us up for next fall, starting the curriculum review process. Now that process, how long it will take, it might be that there's steps that are shorter, as in like how well aligned and how comprehensive is our current curriculum and course offerings to the modules? And then, but we're also going to be looking at like, what would, what would a more comprehensive program look like K-12? So during the course of next year, I think I'm really going to work with Pam and Michelle to see like, are there timelines that we can prioritize some of that work within the curriculum review process versus others? So I don't, I don't feel comfortable giving a date with that yet, but I think it's going to be, you know, again, making sure that there are any recommendations for any, you know, fiscal or staffing impacts, whether it's world language or arts or anything that would come out of any of the curriculum reviews is, is directly tied to, you know, rounding it in the frameworks and what our data is saying and what the field resources.
Could you provide some more information on the, the genocide education grant?
Yes.
It's such a dark topic. I'd just like to have some more backstory to that.
Yeah.
You know, who's administering and what is it entail?
That's a great question. So there's actually a state law that's the genocide education law that requires all public schools in Massachusetts to teach genocide education in middle school and preschool. When they do it, it's, it's, the law actually states, you know, specifically about genocide, but also about how grouping people together and making generalizations and negative generalizations about groupings of people can be harmful. So with something as broad as why it's important to be inclusive and, and respect all groups of people to something as explicit as like Holocaust education at the high school course level. So sometimes what you might see in the middle school is more why we make sure that we're respecting and understanding perspectives and other, other people's cultures and religious experiences and any population that may have been, may have been harmed in the past. A lot of it is integrated into different curriculum, like the Leaguers is something that's actually integrated right into the middle school curriculum. The grant itself that we receive from the state, we're receiving money this year and next year. So the $30,000 grant that we received, that's going to let us do things like teacher training. How are you making developmentally appropriate supports to engage students? They can provide texts, so novels that would be developed, again, developmentally appropriate to support that student field trips. So one of the pieces that we're looking at right now is there's a current exhibit in Boston around the Holocaust. So that they're looking, that will cover our travel and student pay for that. It's also looking at curriculum. So Brown, Brown University has some unit that support and partner with our high school curriculum. So we're going to invest in those to use this grant to do those pieces. So it's comprehensive, you know, it, it's some curriculum materials. It's a lot of teacher training, student, student experiences. And then any sort of travel or any other conference attendance that might be integrated in. All of it really helps us to bolster what's currently happening, but do it in a way that helps us stay in line with the requirements of state law.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. It sounds like it just helps teachers navigate these sensitive issues. And obviously there's different levels of it based on grade and age and all that.
You said it beautifully, yeah. It's like what, what, the way you might talk about it with a 12 year old is going to look and sound really different than a 10 year old. And then that, that sensitivity of as a staff member, as an adult, supporting difficult conversations in the classroom. As you're, I think we can all benefit from both understanding the background and then also how do you facilitate difficult conversations? So that's what we're really aiming to do. But I'm happy to continue to share updates. And again, working with the high school, the, the secondary department head on that. She's got a lot of really great ideas and she's working in partnership with the English department as well to look at tax selection and making sure that we're supporting that in all the staff that might be.
Thank you. Anything else on the general? All right. And yes, let's move into the SOI. So. So I can't get away from being a history. I, I don't know how many people are following the evolution of the student opportunity act and what it came under. But going back almost as far as 2015, student opportunity act came out of a multi-year chapter 70 foundation formula review project at the state level. So there were hearings across the state to review the chapter 70 formula that had been created somewhere back in the eighties or nineties. And then maybe reviewed again with the gent, with the on, with the initiation of that. In a nutshell, a very old formula that hasn't been changed. So in the formula, there are allocations for, there are variables that represent growth in healthcare growth and special education costs and the percentages by which the foundation formula is calculated among those variables. So the arguments across the state were that the formula did not keep pace with the realities of costs in districts. So after many hearings and a lot of debate, they agreed to update the chapter 70 formula variables. The outcome of which was a seven year phase in process where they incrementally increased those variables over time. The accountability measure that came in line with that adjustment would call the, the student opportunity act. About 12 to 15 districts in the state basically got all of the money, the student opportunity act. Everyone was in support of it because the goal was to get more money to the neediest districts and the neediest students. So the student opportunity act is geared toward ensuring students who are identified in need are getting their resources. Manchester Essex got money through one piece that they improved or out of district student transportation. So we are getting reimbursements there. Other than that, our chapter 70 has been held harmless since then because it's based on enrollment and our enrollment's declining. So at that best each year, we've gotten either $30 per head or in some years the legislature goes up to $60 per head. So somewhere between, I think it's about $40,000 and $60,000. Uh, $40,000 and $80,000 annually that we're actually getting in chapter 70, realizing very little from anything that the SOI has done. The long introduction to say, even though we're not really getting anything out of it, we're required to submit a plan. So to Erica's point, the plan is kluge because it's all online. So, you know, poor Heather had to like download the template, do it in Word, transfer it. So when you print, when you download it, you can't see all of the limitations of it. You know, there are dropdowns, there are certain things you have to fill out, certain ways you have to frame things. So it doesn't read particularly well. I'm going to let Heather talk about the data analysis they did and why they chose the group. But I, I think what we try to do, what we do as, whether it's the original, the amendment or this version of the SOI, is we're trying to not create new work, but have the work in that mirror of things that we're already working on and striving for in the district. Because we aren't really being resourced for it. And we've already allocated our funds to certain areas. So we're trying to highlight one area that aligns with their ask. And that's how we arrived at what we put forth here. So Heather, do you want to talk a little bit about the details? And then if you have foundation formula questions.
I'm not trying to.
Can I ask a clarifying question because this will help me understand better?
Yep.
Do we need to take action on this?
You're going to need to.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that that's what we're looking for.
So the work was, um, it's really, as, as Pam said, there's actually a lot of limitations. So you can't just pick anything to focus on. You have to identify a student group. And in the student groups, Desi provides you sort of a list of choices. And they're often the same student groups we talk about when we look at disaggregating data based on student groups that may have traditionally been at risk for academic success. In doing the, the data looking, um, the student services director, Allison Holland and I sat together to look across the different data sets. The one that we were really seeing a lot of consistency with, like the gap of performance of all students versus one of our disaggregated student groups was students with disabilities. And in looking at that piece, a lot of it complemented the work that we, the district has known, has named and is, is working for. So it, it made a lot of sense for that piece. Now, what it doesn't mean is it doesn't mean that there aren't other areas or student groups that you might disaggregate by that you would see different trends. One example is I spoke to you in the fall about our high need student population. That, as you remember, is an inclusive group. It includes students with disabilities, low income and multilingual learners. You cannot select high needs, it's too global. You, you could select multilingual learners, you could select students with disabilities or low income, but you cannot include that one because it is too, it's sort of a collection. Um, so based on. Um, so based on, based on what we saw in that, in that trend, that, that made sense for us both within our internal data systems. And we then followed up with looking at, we had questions about enrollment, participation. We had questions about how are they doing in our internal diagnostics and on our state assessments. So that, that felt like a really appropriate selection for us, for a student group. The goal with the SOA plans is that the districts is acknowledging that you cannot just look at how you're doing in the average. Is everybody doing okay on the average? It really requires that you do that deeper dive in, which, again, the district has done a nice job being thoughtful about that and having those conversations. So this is another piece of, a lot of this is, is not new because the district had started doing that work already. So the pieces, once you, once you go through this process, is the state asks you to select an evidence-based practice, which they, you know, they love acronyms, an EBP, you'll see in here. And they have a dropdown list from which you can select. So they have three big categories, and these are all listed on Dessie's website. They created an educational vision, which had strategic objectives, and there's three big buckets of these objectives. And then with underneath those buckets, there's strategic, there's strategic objectives that then have, what do they call the, you know, have an US priority strategy. So then you pull the objective and then you name a strategy. So when you see, for example, the pieces that we named at the, within the summary, you'll see the high-quality curriculum review adoption is one of the priority strategies. The supporting high-leverage teaching practices is another strategy. Um, effective student systems is another strategy. So that language comes directly from Dessie. You select from their evidence-based practice list and name what those steps are that you're going to take and, and move forward to do.
One of them, Heather.
There are some, as Pam said, there are some things on here that you don't, there's no narrative choice. You just have to like click yes. There isn't a no. You just have to click yes. One of those examples is section three. You just have to confirm your district will use these targets. You just click the box, like that's all it is. So there are some that like, it looks like I wrote stuff. If not, I just have to. So we have some questions. Some of it we can own, but.
And this is, you know, there, there is the reality that the state has to, we are complying, so the state can comply with its. So it's good work.
Yeah.
I think it is that it's work we are already doing in some way, shape, or form. And this is just, it memorializes an aspect which aligns with our obligation.
That's one of the positives. It was really easy to go on their evidence-based practice list and look at a lot of these pieces that we're doing. We've named these, and, and so it was, it was a nice confirmation that the work we're doing is targeted to meet. And what you'll see is that there's not a lot of things in here that's specific. Students with disabilities will get separate from, because the goal is really thinking about how is the system improving to make sure that we're decreasing academic performance across different student groups. So when you're looking at it, thinking about something like the universal design for learning, improving that teaching practice, that is an inclusive practice that supports all learners within a classroom. And specifically, when our students with disabilities are engaged in those core content classrooms, and in all of their classrooms, that all teachers have the capacity to meet their needs. So, well, it doesn't, while we've named students with disabilities, which you're not going to see, is a lot of things that are only for that student group, but really that we're improving our practices on the whole, decrease the discrepancy between the groups.
Well, I know there were some questions that came in by email. Would anyone like to ask questions here at this point?
So, so Heather, I, I both appreciate that this is the reflection of what we're doing. And we're doing a lot of things that address these populations, which is great. And I also appreciate that some of the efforts that you've included, such as UDL, will benefit students with disabilities. But the same logic of, you know, don't choose the big group because then you don't get specific. It does worry me a little bit that, you know, this is targeted to students with disabilities, yet there is nothing that will ensure, I guess is the right word, that students with disabilities actually get attended to in a particular way. So to me, just the disjointedness of the choice of students with disabilities, and then no speaking to students of, you know, nothing that speaks to students with disabilities in particular, just really, I was, I was really kind of, all right, what am I looking for, looking at here, or what are we improving? So I guess, you know, one thing, even though you just had to say yes to the targets, what are our targets?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, how do, how do we assume that these general approaches for all students are actually going to get students with disabilities to those targets?
Question. A few good questions in there. So one piece I would say is, when you think about things like the development of, our continued development of the MTSS, which is the multi-tiered support for all learners. Tier one is that inclusive, everybody gets that, all students have that. So students with disabilities are in our, in our classrooms and in our learning spaces with all teachers. And while they may also have additional services to target an area of a, of a learning disability, they also are working with teachers every day. So something like Universal Design for Learning, UDL, a solid MTSS system that provides that in-time intervention support, those are really supporting of all, but are especially important for our students who might have learning differences. Because the whole idea is building that inclusive classroom environment so that students with disabilities are not only attended to by special educators, but are in fact, are within classrooms that are inclusive and targeting their needs and making sure there's access points for all, while additionally having that targeted support to intervene on their behalf of the disability. So that's a big piece of, of the strategic objectives that Dessie does. You're not going to see anything that's only for that piece because their goal is that you're improving the practices of all. And if you do that, the, the sort of the theory is that, then those more vulnerable students' needs, that you're going to see it decrease because your groups are really, definitely have gaps. Who has the largest discrepancy within performance versus the all-student year aggregate? If we improve the practices for all by using things like inclusive instructional practices, high-quality curriculum that attends to learning differences, it will decrease that gap. The question about the three-year piece that, that we just had a click to say yes. So the piece says, confirm your district will use Dessie's three-year targets for increasing performance for lowest-performing students groups in the LA map. They give us that each year. That's our accountability reports. So when we get our accountability measures from the state, we get all students, and then we get lowest performing. And that lowest performing bucket comes from scores on MCAS. So they give us our, our target, our annual targets we have to meet, and those targets are across performance, across growth, attendance. So those are all named in our accountability, in our accountability measures at district and school level.
And there we go.
I mean, literally, yes, we can pull them up. They're on, they're public facing. So if they're, if you're curious to look at what they each are for each piece, they're on the Dessie's district profiles, naming, but they're literally like numeric. So you get a score of one to four. One is, or maybe zero to four. Four is you've exceeded the target, three is you've met the target, two is you've made progress towards, one is some, and zero is none, or you've progressed or moving forward on those point scales. I'm happy to share with you how they create them, but they're, each school and district has many points on those targets that are on our accountability measures that we're charging.
So, so maybe then the question is, you know, I, I completely understand and hear, and in many ways agree with the theory that attending to all will raise this particular subgroup. I also know that in practice, when we do that, we sometimes forget the subgroups. So maybe the question is, what in here or in your practice will actually monitor that, whether or not that's exactly happening?
And so I think that's a piece within, within some of the, some of the, excuse me, some of the indicators specifically name, for example, under the evidence-based practice of 2.2 with the MTSS, one of the commitments to monitoring and decreasing a performance gap between students with disabilities and all student populations on the math and literacy MCAS. And in the effective student system one, we named the accelerating growth for students receiving the targeted support, and a decrease in numbers of students significantly below. So some of the direct student pieces are actually making that commitment to monitor. In addition to, because we always do it, because it's good practice, and because we're charged with it, this is also making that public commitment in the plan that those are pieces that we're going to monitor with explicit goals to make sure that interventions we're taking are having the measured impact we would expect.
There's, there's a layer of it as well, that students with disabilities, you have an annual evaluation. You have an annual meeting to chart the progress and liaison charge with monitoring that progress, collecting data to see if it's effective progress throughout the year. So you actually have a built-in level of monitoring for this particular. Any other, you're welcome. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the SOA plan as presented. Is there a motion? Kate, which is their second? Annamix, the second, is there discussion? I would just like to say that I noticed on here, one little point of interest that we've been talking about, and one of the things is documenting family attendance at, documentation of attendance at family conferences. So that might just want to note that we've been talking about here. Any other discussion? On favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for the great questions. Thank you for your good work, as always. All right, school committee end of year calendar. Back to it.
Yeah, we did.
We added three things. So this, you know, I appreciate us taking a little bit of time because it's something to get some things straight, too. So I just took all our notes from last time, added them in, tried to project where our agenda, what key agenda items will be, meetings, and just wanted to check in on a couple of start times and a little bit of what we want to do with June, June the 4th and June the 18th. So Tuesday, April 2nd, we're here.
Yeah.
We've done it. So we can check the box. So on April 24th. Good work. Five o'clock, are we enough to start? Which, that's Manchester.
They started.
They start at six. I mean, we could start at 4:45. Give us an hour and 15-minute transition time. So it's just a. It's just the FPC appointment and then consent agenda, item. And if we needed to check in, any loss of it, it's a meeting, which I don't think. I think five is fine also, but since we're talking about it, I think we should make a real commitment to be done 15 minutes before a town meeting starts. We can't, we can't be running into town meeting time like we have in the past.
Well, what else is going to be on the agenda? Because we talked about policies.
Right, but we were saying that that doesn't make sense to do at these meetings as we're trying to pull right into a town meeting, and then we would hold those to the 21st, which we have to look at because that's getting big.
Right.
But I don't think it's reasonable for us to undertake a, a real substantive policy discussion on a fair case as we're mentally prepared to be in town meeting at that point. So, so just with the 24th, is 45 minutes enough for us to come in, do consent? All we need to do is consent to check, check pay bills, you know, reports, and then do our discussion in seating of the building. I think that's sufficient. Does everyone else feel comfortable with that? Is there anyone who has a concern about that?
How long do the appointments, about major event on the last?
Well, we're going to tell you who they are and take a motion to discuss it and discuss, yeah, and kind of give the charge. All right.
Okay.
I do think we have a little swing time because they do these surveying pieces at the beginning, but 45.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a good look for us to be in and seated when things start.
So then the same question. Whether we do the school committee calendar, not like give it to you to preview, we don't necessarily have to vote it. So this means we'll start to roll forward this year's calendar to next year to project all of the dates.
Yeah.
So it can be a first look at that. We will have a consent agenda. Probably no reports unless something comes up that we need to act on quickly. I don't know of anything now. They're starting at 6:45.
Question, question on that, just since when we go to the 21st, we're looking at potentially a longer meeting. Is there a chance we could do handbooks on the 6th?
There is, they have them ready. We're looking at, it, it was, I took tentative, I took it needed off because we are now talking about aligning all of our attendance policies with the chronic absenteeism language.
Okay.
So that might be something you want to hear about, being asked questions about.
That's more than.
That's why they're all coming at the same time, because it's going to be one set of language that's.
Got it.
So I do, I don't think I would put that on the 6th.
A lot of curriculum.
Uh, I can take that off, yeah, well. Yeah, I can take that off the 24th.
Updates are early May, makes sense to.
I mean, that's, yeah, May 6th is still a month out from now. Would it be possible to do the curriculum updates and we still get it? Would that work for you?
It makes sense.
Or push it off the June 4th. There's not a time to be done.
We should probably look back, yeah, on June 4th. So that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think. We can talk much.
Yeah.
So I can.
Right, so what did we just decide about that?
That curriculum, that kind of follows the pattern that we've established, which is the first meeting of the month. That's the curriculum update.
Okay. All right, so then do that there. All right. Circulum update, did you just, the first meeting of the month is May 6th.
Right.
You are there.
Do there?
Okay.
And also June 4th.
And then June.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if things go as planned, we'd like to try to get a budget actual report by then. And then just because she's taking in and she needs a little time to know what she's, whether or not. How much is going, how much of a list is going to take?
Yeah.
And I didn't talk about it in my, right now, we're pulling together the budget book. So that's kind of, yeah, that's for priority.
Yes.
Our intent is to still go forward with a postcard with a QR code, keep it all online here instead of publishing books. So also on the 24th, we should, we have the handbooks.
21st.
The 21st, sorry, CPAC.
Yep.
The review of the report. We want to try to keep them all bundled together. It's all the same people.
Yeah.
We just. The policy.
Yes.
And potentially the comfort dog. If they're in the position to do it.
So let me ask the question of, well, of the committee, do we think we're not making it before town meeting on, on these things? Do we think it would be wise to split up the policy questions and do the reserve policy discussion at our summer workshop? And just focus on the extracurriculars right now because that has implications on a timeframe for families moving forward?
If I could make a recommendation that we actually try to put the extracurricular in one of the early starts, it shouldn't be that long of a conversation, and it gets an answer back to the community in a relatively timely fashion.
My concern with that, I'm not opposed to it necessarily, but my concern with that is that there are going to be, there are going to be people who want to participate in that and maybe, you know, make a public comment or that sort of thing. And if we're backing it up with a town meeting, that's going to be difficult for people. That's my only concern there. That's, that's just a concern.
So I bring that in part because I think it's going to be very important for us to get input from the committee here on reserve before the summer. Otherwise, it's going to stall and it'll be next year before we get to it again.
I don't think that has to be the case, but that's. I don't, I would push back on that it's going to stall and then it's next year. I don't think that's necessarily the case, but I'm open to moving more quickly. It, it just means a full meeting on the 21st.
But if we don't talk about it till the summer?
I, I would echo Jake's feeling. I think because we are so into the weeds and details on this right now, it is, it is tricky to wait, you know, four weeks and then dive back into the weeds because you, you know where you are. So I would, all things being equal, I would try to fit this in sooner rather than later. And I, I do agree with you that people might want to comment, but also with Jake, that we've really kind of narrowed down the issues so that it's sort of a discreet set of information that we'll be presenting based on what we've learned. It's comments that people want to make them, and then it's.
So what would be, so are we talking about a shorter, shorter, shorter meeting?
That was what Jake was proposing.
And, and just based on time, if better than the Essex one, we'd have more than 45 minutes there.
I will say I'm not comfortable with that. I would, I would rather just have a full meeting on the 21st if that's the case. I don't think it's reasonable to ask people to have that kind of in-depth conversation before town meeting.
Maybe we put a pin in it and revisit and look at what you want to do with the 4th, the 18th.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that we want to prioritize that because of her timing and her momentum. So we definitely felt the need
Yeah, this committee to
Yeah. So, I mean, really.
If you had words, like the 21st is too loaded, we could talk to the, I can talk to the principals and I think I can get them to be here on the 4th instead of the 21st if you wanted to make, that's kind of what I'm, what we want to do with the 4th and the 18th. Either gives us more or less room on the 21st agenda, I think is what I'm trying to say. So if we want to let it, we can move some things around.
Well, the other thing
And if you want to do difficults on the 4th, that's a big piece.
Right.
And we can do it there and keep ending up with it in the summer, which it's not the worst thing. Or we can do it at the beginning, like it just kind of what do you want the priorities to be going into the year and what fits the summer work better? What, that's what the discussion is for. How do you want to line it up?
So we can all What else is on the list on the summer?
That's it. There's nothing else. And we already know, I mean, we have a prioritized summer list. We're just looking at to the end of the school year right now.
Right. What summer list that we got that needs to be on this list before the fiscal, before the pandemic years?
I don't know off the top of my head. For the summer work, I don't know. Right now I'm just looking at
Not for the summer work in the picture, but the summer work that we already did in back in August is a list. And what are some of the priorities that we need to put on that we need to discuss before this, before June?
Honestly, and I think the years I've now been on this, we tend to have a longer summer list than we're able to get to in our summer workshop. So I hesitate to push that up to the summer.
I think Anna's not, she's not asking that question. Anna, aren't you saying we identified a list of things over the summer?
Over this past summer.
And are there things that we wanted to fit in before the end of
Oh, I see what you're just
So, yeah, so my understanding from that was that that's what we took to create the goal. And that we triaged basically and took what we needed to prioritize from that into goals that we approached in December. That was, that was what we can do with summer. I, I see what you're saying, but I, I don't know off the top of my head.
I would propose that if there is something on the 21st that we can move, maybe the elementary and secondary school handbooks. If that's not consensus, that we push those to the 4th to allow us time to deal with the policy issues on the 21st. Keep the momentum, hopefully finalize those, those two things and not set us back in terms of whatever needs to happen in the handbooks.
I agree. I would like to ask if we could, if, if we could, would it be possible to move the budget to actual instead? Since that's tentative and we know we'll have the handbooks that need to be approved the 21st.
Does the handbook have to be approved by the
Well, it needs to be approved on the 21st, but we have budget to actual listed as tentative because it's going to be based on whether or not by that point, there's the opportunity to get to it. So why don't we move the tentative thing to the board? And then it can become a firm thing.
Is CPAC kind of ever anymore or no? And we're just waiting for confirmation from the members of CPAC.
So that So either of the tentative things, if we move that to the 4th, then
Well, I think, let's talk about the 4th.
Yeah.
Okay, because the 4th starts with the retiring reception.
Right.
Will that also be reorganization?
That's what's in the
We can add the budget to actual and if we do end of year transfers and just do it all as one big batch.
Yeah.
We could do the handbooks. Before the principals will be there for the reception, they can stay and do the handbooks, that could work.
Well, now we're just pushing all
Yeah.
Five things to work. I think we just need to pick one thing to move to the board.
I would move elementary, secondary, handbooks.
Okay, and just leave the two tentative things that we have and expect that they'll happen on the 21st? Okay, let's do that. Is everyone okay with that?
And we're adding the reserves on the 21st. That's what we're making And the comfort dog.
And the comfort dog. Yeah. All right. So we're moving
Which is, which is the SRO.
Yeah.
No, they need to get approval so we can take the dog.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like to have trial.
Currently we have, so on the 21st, we have a tentative budget to actual. We're moving the handbooks. We have a tentative CPAC. And then we will have our discussion of two policy topics and the comfort dog discussion and presumably both. At that point, right, we'll be, okay. Okay. And then on Tuesday, on the 4th, that gives us a reorganization, difficults and handbooks. And, oh, and a curriculum update.
Which is basically the general.
Yeah.
So that's all.
Yeah, so that's together. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
So it's going to be back to May 18th?
We hope not.
So we don't, what do we decide?
So Anna, what I, what I would say is let's keep it as it is needed because if we do actually make progress on the policies, then we actually may be presenting it for a first review on June 4th, possible adoption on June 18th.
Yeah, we'll need to decide certainly by the June 4th meeting, but up until that point, that everything we need to keep the 18th tentative. The other thing is that we sometimes have trouble getting a forum after school.
That's why I'm not discussing now whether or not we need, if we need another meeting, pick a different date or pick a different
I think with the adjustments we just made, it seems manageable. Anyone else?
Here.
Okay. Let's give that a shot.
The only other piece is we'll probably need to do the amended budget.
Yeah.
Should we do that with the budget, the actual? No, we can't do the 24th. I don't know.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you do that with, with a budget to actual report together on June 4th?
Nope, that's on the 21st. Now we need to keep this 45 minutes.
Oh, that's right. They're keeping the tentative. Yeah.
Correct.
So 21st. Does that give you enough time to show?
80 days.
21st.
We're budgeting actual and we think we'll be able to do the amended budget discussion on these items.
Okay. So that's what takes that time. There we go. Can I ask that we start at maybe 5:15 if you feel anybody has a problem?
Hey, just give us a little breathing room.
You bet.
Wait, no, I think May 6th.
May 6th, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're adding an extra item.
May 6th is the Essex town meeting and we're starting at 5:15. We're going to do the, the year 25 school committee calendar. We're going to do the amended budget. Those are the things we're going to start at 5:15.
Why are we doing the budget, amended budget on May 6th instead of May 21st with the budget?
Because our understanding right now is we'll have to amend the full FY24 budget. And then we'll need 45 days. We amended here, communicated to the town, they need to let it sit for 45 days for it to become
Real, to take no action.
To take no action.
Relax.
So if we go too late, we won't have the 45 days. And then we're going to cross off into different fiscal years. I'm not the accountant, but that sounds like a header.
But in your amended budget, you will have the latest budget to actual data. So within the two go together, so that will save you time.
The amended budget, that, so maybe you want to give us a review that's from the field.
So this is so we can take in the revenue
Right.
Fields.
Right.
And process it.
It's not the same as CPAC.
We'll continue to research it, make sure we're clear on everything and see if there is another way. Right now, what, from our research, what we know is that we amend our FY24 budget to take in the unintended, unanticipated revenue.
Yeah.
Revenue needs to come in and then get transferred to stabilization. So the way to do that is by cheap, by amending the operating budget.
But really what you're saying, it's not, it's not a full look at our budget. It's just a deal with the fields.
Yeah. Which
I just, he's been alerting us to
Right. Just forever. I would just like to leave space in case we have questions, in case there's
It's a reasonable thing to
We are going to fly this by line through the budget, just changing revenue.
Yeah. Based on things that are well-covered territory for the past year plus. Once again, this looks reasonable. Anyone else? Manageable.
We're not going to do one, at one point we talked about doing the extracurricular athletics policy discussion on the 6th. That's not happening. That's all getting bundled in.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. All right, school committee action items, upcoming town meetings. Is that further, just for the discussion of the plan?
Um, just, is there anything? I know, Anna, you're looking for some old scripts, which I will dig out. We're just waiting for the formal approval for Manchester.
Yeah.
We have a break in between, which will grow a little bit permanent, so we need everything tidied up by next week. Other than that, I didn't know if you guys had any thoughts or questions. With getting out the feasibility word, we can't advocate. We can alert, but that's going to be discussed, so that's all I have.
I have a question about that too. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
So I, I imagine all manner of questions can come up at town meeting as they always do. And so for instance, if we get questions at the Manchester town meeting, questioning why, whatever, all the questions that we can, that people have asked already and keep, people will continue to ask, how are those feeling?
I can speak to that a little bit. Last year was unique in that it was so much all at once with the override questions and asking everything. But what has been my experience in the past and made an attempt at it kind of late in the game last year is that the people who sent the articles can make a plan in advance. So for instance, if I'm presenting the operational budget article to Essex and someone asks, asks a question about the, the teacher contract and, and you know, how that went, I might say, I'm going to invite, you know, through the moderator, may I please invite, you know, Kate, worked on that, to answer that question. If it's a question about details of financials and things like that, you can always go to, you know, if it's more program related and that sort of thing, it goes to Pam. But if it's something, you know, in our scope or the political part of it or the representation part of it, we can answer it. So it's the kind of thing where it can be a real team experience. Last year again was neat. I would hope that this year it could be a little bit more of a shared experience in that way, but that's just, that's what I know from past experience, which is
So, of course, you mentioned that last year you would just refer to Pam for most of the questions. So are you
Well, last year, I remember he answered a question and then he looked at Pam and says, that makes sense? Was that accurate? And she said, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
They're always there to help or to correct if we have misinformation or anything like that up in the speed.
Yeah. So just like in town meetings, when someone asks whoever whoever brought the article, whoever described the article from the town boards, you know, they ask a question, they defer to, you know, why are we following another police car? They'll defer to police. It's the same thing. He said, we just refer to the expert of that area. So when it comes to models, that was the expert area. It's just everybody else.
So question then, so since we're all here. And I, I don't mean to harp on this. I just, I really feel strongly about being prepared for town meetings. I care about being prepared about it. Regarding the operational and capital, and capital budget, I keep kind of skipping over that. There's, there's the two. And, but there's usually not any questions about the capital budget. It's the operational budget that people care deeply about and ask their question.
The two votes are the formula. That's the one that I'm holding currently. I would be the most that I will have to do some more to make sure I'm up on it. I, I worked with it in depthly this year, so feeling a little bit better, but that's always been an oddy question.
Yeah.
Sometimes we get the question, why do we always talk about the it's just
because this is the way it is done. So that is the way
So those are the two votes and I think the motion is conclusive about the operation.
Yeah. So, so for that, it has been, and I don't know if this is written somewhere or not, but it has been the practice of this committee that the chair and the vice chair represent our committee within our towns. So perhaps it would make sense for us to connect and and talk through some of the questions that we think might come up or things that we wonder, you know, how we should parse out and then connect with our town counterparts to make that plan. So that we can understand, you know, who, who might want into what, what kind of things should be deferred, you know, to the two of you. And then the other thing is the feasibility study. So I, I had sent an email for the board's understanding. I had sent an email to Anne Harrison as chair for Manchester Select Board and Ruth Green as chair for Essex Board Selectmen, asking what articles they would like us to present versus not in their town meeting really. I don't think we ended up with a final on anything at this point. Look, so looking back, I'll just give you where I am. Looking back, my understanding was from 2016, the school committee representatives presented those articles and I'm sure deferred questions to others. If that is to be the case, the question becomes, do we want it to be the chair and vice chair as the others? Or do we I don't know if it was the chair and vice chair or if it was the SBC members at the time. It was Annie and Linda. And it was chair and vice chair. Okay. Because it would have been Annie and Caroline otherwise, right? Just looking at fast practice.
Yeah, but I don't think Carolyn wanted to speak. So I can look back.
Yep.
It could go either way.
Right.
I feel like if you guys are going to be like more in it compared to the school committee than the rest, why does it matter that you chair, vice chair? Is it, is whoever that helps the topic the most?
I think they have to ask to decide. That's the question. So is that something you'd be comfortable with? You become comfortable with?
Speaking at town meeting.
Reading.
Reading, behalf of the building committee. Sure, I'm going to sing a song with you all. I've heard your question.
Is the committee comfortable with this? As a plan.
So Anna speaks on behalf of the operating budget.
And the budget.
Yeah. On behalf of the budget and John speaks on behalf
But do we decide that we actually, school committee, actually do need to present for the feasibility study in the town meeting? Or was it only the the town select board?
That's what we're saying. It's still undetermined.
Recollection is that everybody took a piece of it. So that the motion is read by one, but then when there are questions about the town and how they're financing. So it was advancing the motion, support from the boards. So each of, sometimes it's the finance chair and the board selectman chair. Sometimes it's one on the cap, both sometimes. I don't think we have to bring them endorsing, why they're endorsing. And some, and I, I think this time the, each town is financing it a different way. So I don't know if the town wants us to speak to their funding mechanism or if they want to speak in support. So I'm just Ain't about the funding. That's what we're working out.
Sorry, that was very labor to get out.
Which is why we're kind of, we're playing right now in the motions because how are we, how are we structuring it?
So right now we're just talking about what are the very small piece of that operation would potentially be.
If we need to
Right. And then we'll continue to have this conversation to see how our two towns would prefer to. Did we speak last year on turf deals or did it just go through? We did.
Yeah.
We did.
So you introduced and then they spoke to about the budget.
We were asked about funding as well because
Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, I, I think we handled the whole turf.
We did.
So why do I recall Brett discussing the
So why do I recall discussing the change in how they were handling the reduction of the operating budget and then reallocating it to the turf field, which would make sense.
So that was a separate.
So maybe that's one article. So I think if I can offer, it probably makes sense for us to call an online meeting with the reps, the board chairs, just to talk through. It's not about who makes.
Right.
It's pretty clear who makes the motion, like how do we want to choreograph this so it's clear to people and we're not stepping on each other?
Yes.
That's what I think I was trying to get through in that email I asked you, which probably blackfired. Just because I know the funding, yeah, the funding is different and it's straightforward in one and not and maybe not so in the other.
Yeah.
So who's we, you guys will coordinate with.
The way we did it last time, that seemed to work for everybody and kind of how we are structured.
Facility Subcommittee.
Yeah. Called, hosted a meeting and then I invited the chairs of the boards to attend so we could talk through some of these issues. Public meeting, anybody come on in?
Because it was, it's this school building, it's the, it was facility subcommittee. Is that what you're saying? You said SBC, I thought. Yeah, I might, I might start you. So the facilities subcommittee, since we're talking about that specific thing.
Yep.
Okay, then let's do that. Lovely. Any other questions? Okay. Then school committee comment about. I can wait. Michelle, you must be a good luck charm. It's 7:52, I feel like I should draw this out a little bit. No, I, I had had something on my mind. I had sort of brought it up to Pam and, but in the wrong context, because I thought it meant something else. And then Kate brought it up to me. The MASC day on the hill. Coming up. I, I'm sure we all got, we get lots of pamphlets and things in the mail from MASC. I think Kate, I hope I'm not speaking, Kate and I are hoping to go. Would, if anyone else would like to join, and we still have to look at the date and confirm.
I'm now looking at the date and it is the same day as Essex Town Meeting.
Oh, that's nice.
Full schedule of events was for that.
So considering is the word here. So if anyone else would be interested in considering going, then let us know.
And it's for adults or adults and adults?
Yeah.
That was, I wasn't sure.
No, no, we confirmed that. So, yeah, so I, I am hoping to go if, if it's manageable to be able to get back in time without being stressed about it, which I think it is. I am planning to go and if anyone else would like to join, you are welcome to. I will ask the question in a public meeting, we have a school committee budget. Is this something that we should plan to fund ourselves or is this something that we, we have aligned that we have? Okay, now we do that. Amy can register you as well.
Right, so on that point, can we at some point have a discussion about kind of how, what our relationship with MASC is? Because they, this is just one event of a number that they have, right?
We're all welcome to go to events, yeah.
I know, but one thing, like, like their summer conference, you know, costs, you know, it's cost of that kind of thing. So just, I don't think, I've, I've never participated in a discussion about that, so it'd be.
Sure.
Yeah, it looks like it's from nine to one. It's like one is the meeting with the legislators, I don't know how long.
It seems manageable to get back in time still.
Um, I have a question and I'm going to ask it to you.
That section.
So you mentioned that you're also going to talk about the school committee operation, basic rules, whatnot. How? When is that?
That's a good question. I'm not sure that we have accounted for that back in here. So let me see where we are with some of that as well, because we were trying to come back around this. Sorry, we were trying to come back around specifically to the conversation about the presentations. And, and then in the summer, we visit our operating rooms. In the summer, yeah. Which is what we usually do. Last year we just didn't really get. Any other school committee comment?
Not, I'm not school committee, but it sounds like I need to start surveying people on their summer. Totally a good idea.
Is it long this long or do I?
Going to depend who's, what we get in forum.
It's, it's for anything, yeah, it's not that easy. Okay. Any other school committee comment?
Welcome again. Thank you for all of your input.
Should we, mine have not to refer any questions to you, it's too early.
That's kind of what we do anyway. We run, we triage through Pam generally anyway. Let's give her a little bit. Okay, here, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Sorry.
You can choose from all these people. All in favor? Anonymous, we are adjourned at 7:57 PM. Maria, can you turn off the recording and the?